I now call this meeting of the Bryan Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We want to wish a warm welcome to everyone who's with us tonight. Citizens may make comments about topics relevant to district business. Topics should be limited to three minutes, and comments concerning specific students or personnel will be heard in closed session. Tiffany, do we have any comments today?
No.
No? Thank you. There being none, I ask that you turn off the sound on all electronic devices. Yes. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. So our pledge today for the American flag, we want to welcome Principal Gloria Garcia Rhodes and our wonderful students from Bonham Elementary. Good evening, everybody. I am proud Principal Gloria Garcia Rhodes, and I have some of Bonham Student Council with us this evening. And so we're gonna just, I'm gonna allow them to introduce themselves, and then we will start with the pledge. Talk on the mic.
Good evening, everybody. I'm proud Principal Gloria Garcia Rhodes. I have student council, some of my members, student council from Bonham. And so I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, and then we will start with the pledges.
Okay? Start.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Annabella.
Good evening, my name is Genesis.
Good evening, my name is Gloria, and I'm in fourth grade.
Good evening, my name is Isaac, and I'm in the fourth grade.
Good evening, I'm Dylan.
Good evening, I'm Yasanen.
Good evening, my name is Salem, and I'm in fourth grade.
Good evening, my name is Jamal, and I'm in fourth grade.
Good evening, my name is Victoria, and I'm in fourth grade.
Hey Dylan, I'm gonna let you lead.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, liberty and justice for all. On to the Texas flag.
Do we, is Bowen doing the Texas flag? I don't know. Okay, y'all are ready? Well, just go Texas flag!
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, yawn and indivisible.
Thank you for being here. Everyone may be seated. All right, we're gonna start with our spotlights. We have our Elementary Teacher of the Month. It will be introduced by Principal Alma, Dr. Alma Velez, from Jones Elementary, and we're gonna recognize Lori Stewart. So please come forward.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here today. I do want to introduce to you our lovely coach Lori Stewart. She is the one and only that is responsible for hosting all of our programs at Jones. And so just a little bit about her and what our staff thinks about her is she definitely helps produce the most amazing musical programs that showcase the wonderful students we have at Jones. She gives unselfishly of her time and talents. She uses her planning time to practice with the students that are preparing for the upcoming program, and she gives up her evenings to help get the entire gym set up for the program. And if you've ever been to one of our programs, you know it is a full-size gym, and she gets the entire gym set up for that program. The sets and costumes created are truly amazing and draw in a huge crowd every time. When asked about why she does this, her answer is simply to provide our students with experiences and opportunities they may not ever get otherwise. Our students are definitely more confident in themselves, in great part due to her hard work and effort. Her knowledge of all students allows her to pick students for parts that will allow them to not only show off their talents, but that will also challenge them to grow in their areas, in the areas in which they are weak. She is seen as both a humble and giving educator by all of our staff. And it is for that reason, and all of the reasons that I've mentioned here, and many that I didn't even mention, that we, as Anton Jones Elementary, chose Coach Stewart to be our Teacher of the Month, and we feel so fortunate that you were able to see that and recognize her as Bryan ISD's Teacher of the Month. So thank you.
We thank Truist Bank for supporting our Teacher of the Month at Bryan ISD. Thank you, congratulations. All right, and moving to our Secondary Teacher of the Month, we welcome Principal Dr. Desiree Caperton to present the award from Jane Long Intermediate to Delandria Henderson.
Yes, go Lobos! This is Delandria Henderson, and she is the sixth-grade reading language arts teacher. Delandria is a great asset to Long. As a Bryan ISD product, graduate of Rutter High School, we are beyond fortunate to have her as part of our staff. Delandria is hands-down a teacher leader at Long. Over the past few years, during the month of February, to celebrate Black History Month, Delandria has put together a Black History Door Decorating Contest, Dress-Up Days, trivia, and a luncheon. This year, she organized Long's first annual Black History Wax Museum, and in doing all of this, she reaches for outside resources and the community to involve all of our Lobos. Her work ethic gives us all great pride in what she is able to accomplish for our campus and our community. Earlier this school year, Delandria and her colleagues organized a literacy night that was a huge success. Many of our parents attended this event with their children. It was a great night, not only for the students to learn, but for the parents as well. The feedback was positive, and parents loved the opportunity to learn what their children are learning. It was also a great time for parents to build relationships with each other. Delandria is also a person who will help with duties that aren't assigned to her. She'll do whatever it takes to support our Lobos. She's willing to cover Walker duty alone, not an easy task. She gladly steps into a classroom if a substitute is not available, and provides mentor support to our new and our veteran teachers. Whatever is asked of her, she will comply with a genuine and optimistic heart. Delandria is passionate about inclusivity. She embraces and models tolerance every day. She wants our students, our families, our staff members, and the whole community to feel part of a loving campus community. With kind words, she will advocate for what is right, whether it be treating someone with respect or providing equal access to education through books. She works tirelessly in planning with the content coordinator and her colleagues to ensure students are exposed to current literature and authors. Delandria understands that the little things can garner the greatest growth in all people. Her philanthropic spirit is enhanced through her church and her family. Her fellow church members have donated food and baked goods for staff luncheons and other events, and her aunt and parents have been on campus to help with serving. Delandria is courageous in being her authentic self at all times, funny, caring, and heartfelt. She cares about the Bryan ISD community, and it starts with the Lobos. We all feel valued by Delandria, and she is genuinely grateful to be part of the Lobo family. Long is proud that Delandria Henderson is Teacher of the Month for February.
And I know she's got, yeah, she's got.
Do y'all want a family picture? Come do a family picture. It's a celebration.
While the family is gathering, I attended the Wax Museum, and it was incredible. I would have never known this was first year, so thank you for all the hard work. You knocked it out of the ballpark.
That's true.
Yeah, that's awesome.
More Brian people, yay!
Thank you. And thank you again to Truist Bank for supporting our Teacher of the Month. More fun stuff. Recognition of Bryan High National Merit finalist, Mr. Boobin.
My name is Lane Boobin, I'm principal at Bryan High School, and it's really good to see former students come back and exhibit excellence in our classroom. So it's good to see that tonight. Tonight, I'm here to introduce Gabriel Gomez. Back in September, he was named a semifinalist, and we were recently notified that he is now a finalist, and he will be entering the final stages for competing in one of the 7,250 National Merit Scholarships worth nearly $28 million. We're very proud of his work. I mean, work ethic is beyond reproach, and perseverance is evident. And so we're very proud of you, and look forward to some accomplishments down the road. So thank you very much.
You wanna get a picture? I think Mr. Kennedy.
He can come back and be a teacher anytime he wants to be.
Anytime.
He's got a job. Very proud.
Congratulations, regular. And Mr. Boobin's not done yet. Bryan High School University Interscholastic League Invitational Awards.
So we participated at the College Station High School Invitational, February 11th. The literary criticism team took first place in that academic meet. Journalism team took first place, and the science team took second place. Bryan High students took home 31 awards across 10 different events. The district meet is next, and will take place on March 24th and 25th in Midway, Waco. I had a slide.
I think he's working on it.
Too many kids to, and events to list out for you, so I just wanted to kinda give you a visual of what accomplishments our kids at Bryan High School made. This is just a local meet against all the schools locally. And I can sing or dance?
If you could, yes, if you could. Wow. Oh, there we go, there we go.
There you go.
Congratulations.
There's quite a few students competing, and a lot of awards won last weekend. So we're very proud of all the kids that participated at Academic UIL Bryan High School. And we look forward to competing at the district level. I anticipate that we will do well at district. We've competed already in Colleen, at a meet there, and we took second place overall. And so I'm looking forward to possibly bringing first, second, or third place home for Bryan ISD in our Academic UIL.
And then if you don't mind, one more. I was actually going to do it as part of my superintendent update tonight, so Mr. Kennedy's gonna pull that slide up. But we have the good fortune of having this student present, so I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Boobin.
All right, so Cameron, Cameron Leete, gonna come up here. He brought his book with him. Cameron's a freshman at Bryan High School, plays football and baseball, and is also a talented musician. Cameron wrote a book a while back entitled "The Poor Man's Spirit", and it's a book that he wrote with his grandfather, who illustrated the book. And you were on KBTX, they did do a special feature on him, so we're very proud of him. He's a published author now, as a freshman in high school. Yeah, we're very proud of you. So you wanna show, the book's up there on the screen, but you got a copy of his book.
His dad was a Viking?
Yes.
Did you? Yay! Yes!
Yes, his grandmother is here, Ms. Fonseca, right? Is with him tonight. Oh, they met at Bryan High? So they met at Bryan High, correct?
The rest is history.
The rest is history. So we're very proud of Cameron, a very talented individual, and look forward to seeing some more books out of you. So congratulations. Thank y'all very much.
If you don't mind, we'll do another photo.
Thank y'all.
Thanks, Mr. Boobin.
Mr. Boobin, is this picture in your office? That nice neat shelf with all?
It will be soon, yes. As soon as I can get my hands on a copy.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to our superintendent's update.
Thank you, Dr. Harland. We're so proud of our students, and this does not happen by accident, so thank you to all of our many staff members who prepare and position our students for such success. So as always, it's always my pleasure to brag even more about other students across the district. So on this slide, you notice this is our elementary Academic UIL success. Not only did our high schools and middle school students and intermediate students go out and compete, we had elementary students from all over the district out representing us on this stage as well. They came home with so many medals, you can see in the photos, and a couple of team trophies. So this is just another way to shine a light on the academic success all across the district for many, many of our students. Moving on, we're pleased to report that we held our Intermediate School Information Night just a few nights ago, and this was a really fun night because we opened the doors to our future Sadbury students and parents. Sadbury's not open yet, so we held it right next door at Bonham Elementary. We also held the same event at Long and Rayburn that night, and it was a record turnout for the number of parents and students that attended. And everyone enjoyed meeting, of course, Mr. Alfred Scott, our brand-new principal, and they talked about the day in the life of a future fifth-grade student, and told all the parents everything they needed to learn. They gave them chances to join the PTO and other organizations, and at Jane Long in particular, because they will be hosting our dual-language program, we actually invited two different professors from Texas A&amp;M University to join us that night and to present information to the parents about the importance of dual-language and what it's like to be biliterate. So it was a very well-received meeting and a wonderful night for our parents and students. We also have so many other celebrations happening, fine arts in particular. This is a photo of our mariachi band from Bryan High School, and I'm pleased to report that they have once again advanced to the state level of competition. So these very talented students and this staff member will represent Bryan ISD on the state-level stage, again, just out doing amazing things. And this is just a few more photos of fine arts success. Our drill teams at Bryan High School and Rutter have been very busy. It's competition season, so they have come home with so many different individual and team awards, lots of recognition. They traveled into Houston at several different competitions and represented our district very well. And then speaking of extracurricular and great things happening, this is career and technical education. Taylor Anderson just won Champion Sembra for the American Breeding Hare Association, so a recipient of $15,000 in scholarships at this particular event. And then Aaron Towns just won first place, class eight. Aaron, as you can see, is one of our younger students, and they are out, honestly, it seems like it's been every weekend representing our school district on very important stages. They went to Fort Worth, San Antonio. Several of them are going to the Houston Livestock Show and rodeo as well. So some very talented kids with some pretty incredible livestock. These are just a few more photos. This is Olivia King, she plays fifth-place junior beef skillathon, and some more of our kids competing in different events across the district. As far as athletic achievements, we have been really busy in athletics. Again, so many of our students shining on the local and district and regional and even state level. With six wrestlers advanced to the state-level competition, two of them came back with bronze medals, so they were on the podium representing Bryan ISD. So Bryan ISD is actually starting to be known as a wrestling powerhouse. We're super proud of that. This is community engagement. My goodness, we've been really busy with that. We just hosted the Leadership Brazes for the division under the Chamber of Commerce, and we had 55 people tour our district that day. We took them to Bryan High School. Our culinary students prepared an unbelievably delicious meal. Our Vox Core, I'm sorry, Vocal Legacy performed for them at Bryan High School. Then we traveled over to Rutter High School, and they saw the brand-new additions. Our drum line performed, and they met our staff there, and they were very impressed with all that was happening at Bryan High School and Rutter High School. And then we rounded it out, out at the CTEC with a tour there, and they met our staff members and students as well. And then finally, on this slide, we were invited to join the United Way, Imagine the Impact fundraising in partnership with KBTX. So we had many of our students and even some of our staff members meet at Jones Elementary on this day to help raise money for the United Way. So it was really a great event happening again, lots of community engagement. I failed to mention on the athletic accomplishments, we did have a send-off today for the Rutter High School Rangers. I'm a little remiss in leaving that one out. So we sent them off with a bang, the band, cheerleaders, drill team. All the staff and the students turned out today to wish them well as they travel to Rockdale tonight to take on the Colleen Shoemakers. So we know those Rutter Rangers will win tonight and hopefully keep it going for us. So lots of great things happening in Bryan ISD.
They haven't started yet, is that right?
Not yet. I'll announce updates as the scores come in. Stay tuned.
I'm kinda surprised you're here, actually. That's dedication, Mrs. Kennedy, yes.
So thank you, it's always a pleasure.
Thank you, Ms. Carabine. Next, we will move to our Board Committee reports. We're gonna hear from Dr. Davis about the Executive Committee.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Harland. So on February 8th, the Board's Executive Committee met, discussed several things, including the local policy updates, portables at Rutter High School, the Halliburton Project, and the Board Operating Procedures. Regarding the local policy update, the committee discussed the procedures, of course, related to the updates. In particular, the administration is asking for the Board's consideration of policy updates tonight. So we'll hear that later. When it came to the portables at Rutter High School, the administration is considering requests from Bryan High School to move two portable buildings to Rutter. This would create a space for the Cheyennes inside the building while moving to a different classroom into the portable. The Halliburton Project, Ms. Carabine gave an update on the construction on that project, and the Board Operating Procedures. The committee discussed updating the Board Operating Procedures to ensure that we're current and that we are aligned with policy. And that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. And our Teaching and Learning Committee met as well. Ms. Benford will provide that report.
So we met on February the 17th at 8:15 in the morning. 8:15. Barbara likes early morning. So we talked about getting ready for the opening of Sadbury Intermediate. The staff and administrative team, they're working on trying to balance the numbers of staff between those three intermediates, and make sure that we have the right fit at each campus for the staff as well as the students. Teachers have been given the opportunity to add their name to the transfer list to be considered for positions that were gonna be shifted there. So the three principals are going to collaborate for campus-wide staffing and work together as a team to ensure student success at all campuses. And one of the good things about that is no principal wants to lose any staff. But those principals came together and realized that they need to do what's best for the students and what's best for the district. And so they've really been working close together to make sure that everybody has the best on their campus that suits the students' needs. So we're happy to hear that. So as we know, our leadership is Alfred Scott, he's our principal. Julie Brenner is our Dean of Instructions, and Philip Mackens is gonna be the counselor there. All of these individuals are Bryan ISD graduates, so that is just awesome. And so staffing plans are still underway for all the campuses on all levels. But we're happy to have those three leading that campus, and they understand Bryan ISD because they are Bryan ISD. Barbara also gave us an update on our new Forecast Five. District administration has produced new data views in there for multiple subjects, district priorities that we can view, and they also have been shared with campus administration, and they're gonna provide real-time data to support student learning. So we don't have to worry about, oh, is this, what does this look like? What does that look like? We're able to go in there and see, and all the administration, they're able to see exactly where students are on target, on point with that. So very productive, early morning meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Benford. All right, next we have an information item, the Teacher Incentive Allotment and National Board Certification Update. This is very exciting and something we've been working on for quite some time. Thank you, Dr. Ibarra.
Thank you, Dr. Harland. Just skip this back a little bit. My peripheral vision is not that good. I'm super close and like, I mean, the whiplash there. Okay. So, this is a great, great topic and an exciting moment for the district and for our teachers. We've been on quite the journey for a number of years now towards the teacher incentive allotment. But I thought I'd start with a little bit of a review about the teacher incentive allotment and then kind of update you on where we are today. So, the TIA program was part of House Bill 3 and prior legislation, and its sole purpose, per the legislation, was to reward, retain, and recruit teachers to stay in the classroom while compensating them at a higher rate based on student growth and teacher performance. So, with that, TEA and legislatures designed three different levels. So, there's recognized exemplary and master-level designations. There are pathways to receiving these designations. One of the pathways is obtaining National Board Certification, which I'll speak to a little bit later in the presentation. If that's the pathway a teacher chooses, the highest designation they can receive is recognized. To get the upper-level designations, you have to design and create a local designation system, and that's what Bryan ISD endeavored to do. So, with that, they say approximately the top third of teachers across the state would fall into one of these three categories. And you can kind of see the breakdown there, but the highest being the master-level designation. So, this process for our district began in fall of 2020, and we are just now coming to the end of that first timeline. So, it has been a labor of love for a number of us for a number of years now. But I think as you see kind of the timeline that's gone forward here, it was very important all along the way to the district, to the board, to the teachers, that this was designed with teachers and by teachers. And so, the Strategic Planning Committee, it's majority of teachers. It's from every campus, every discipline, every grade level, the whole range. That's who designed our system in partnership with district administration. We are now towards that final stretch there, the February to April. As I recall, we were in live data collection last year. So, last year, we got all of our data. We produced it. We submitted it to Texas Tech University this October, and we've been waiting for the results of that data test since that moment. And again, it's based on last year's information, and we were very pleased to receive approval of the data system and of our TIA local designation system. This is a huge moment for our teacher because it does mean that they will receive the compensation based on the designations that we have recommended. So, it was a very, very big celebration for the entire team and for those teachers. With that, the data test itself, it's important to also note just the tremendous work of the teachers and of the campus administration who are responsible for the appraisals and the fidelity of that data. TEA and Texas Tech, as they look at that data, they don't have a set passing score. They look at it holistically, and they look at all the different data tests. There are nine different data tests where analyses are run, and about 77% of the districts this year did pass and 22% did not pass, which means their designations were all rejected. Everyone that you put forward would be rejected across the board just because of how the data runs with this actual process. So, very excited to see that we did pass that data test. I won't go into all the different tests that are there, I promise. I won't say a word about them, other than they are thorough. Let's just leave it there. They are thorough. So, what does that mean for our teachers and what does TIA look like in our local designation system? So, of our TIA eligible group, remember, only certain grades, subjects, and disciplines right now are eligible. It's based on having a reliable and valid student growth measure. For our district, for the vast majority of the settings, that's the Measures of Academic Progress MAP test by NWEA. We also use Circle at Pre-K. But of that eligible teacher group, 27% received a designation recommendation. That mirrors what the legislation said we should see. It should be at the top third of teachers, give or take. It should be right about that amount. A total of 183 Bryan ISD teachers received a designation. 52 were recognized, 100 were exemplary, and 31 were designated as a master-level teacher, the highest one that you can get. We have them in all grades and contents. We have ELA, math, science, students that are teachers at elementary who teach all of the subjects. We have special education. We have bilingual education. So, just really a great cross-section. That's actually one of the data tests to make sure that it is equally challenging and rewarding to receive those designations across grades, disciplines, and campuses. All years of experience, our youngest year of experience designee has two years of experience, but was able to obtain a designation based on her performance with student growth and her appraisal with her campus administrator. And then, of course, the one with the highest years of experience had 37 years in education. And what a great moment for that teacher to be recognized. And then, of course, Pre-K through 12, all across the board, we saw a great distribution of teachers being celebrated, which also, this kind of mirrors the state and what they want to see. So, what does that mean for these teachers? So, these amounts and these allocations, they call them allocations, are developed by TEA based on the demographics of your campus and if you are rural or not. We are not rural, so it would not apply for that for us. But it is based on the demographics and terms of the student need at the campuses. And so, what happens if you're a master's-level teacher, let's say, at Jones Elementary, then your payout may be different than one at another campus. At Jones, it would be $28,540 of an allocation coming from the state to the district. And as the board may recall, in the spring of 2020, spring of 2021, we brought forward a recommendation on how to handle those allocations. So, regardless if a district has a student designation system or if a district has a local designation system or not, we have to adopt a policy for how to handle these allocations because teachers move and are mobile as well, and we may receive a teacher from another district who has a designation. So, we did that back in the spring of 2021 because we actually already had one. We had a nationally board-certified teacher. So, we already needed to have that policy in place. And like most of the districts in the state of Texas, we've followed this process. So, the allotment is generated. 10% of that allotment is put out at the district level to pay for running the allotment program and designation program, the TIA. For our district, the vast majority of that will go to the purchase of MAP as well as a cohort partnership with Region 6 for helping teachers obtain National Board Certification. So, again, feeding into the systems that help teachers obtain the designation. After that moment, that remaining 90% is given to the teacher. You do have options at this point in the decision-making process when we did this, but most districts decided to keep it with the teacher to retain, recruit, and reward the teachers to stay in the classroom. And so, the vast majority of districts left it at 90%. This board took action to make sure that this was TRS-eligible. And so, the 90% will have deductions for taxes, but it'll also have TRS and benefits in there, so it counts as a part of their retirement compensation plan. So, it goes into that best three, best five, whichever plan you happen to be on. So, that is a tremendous benefit to our teachers to stay in the district for a number of years as they go forward. So, how many years do these designations happen might be another question. Teachers who receive the designations right now will have them on their certificate, their ESPEC certificates, State Board of Education certificate, for five years. Those certificates or those designations can't be lowered, but they can be increased. So, if you're a recognized teacher, and this year, your student growth is higher and your appraisal is higher, we will resubmit you for a higher designation, and then that resets that clock of five years. So, it keeps for five years. The state still collects data on you, but it cannot be lowered, okay? It can, it's not tied to a specific grade. You can change grade level. You can change subjects. You can change campuses. The designation travels with the teacher, and that allotment that's generated is based on where the teacher is teaching in the month of February. That's how it all ends up, and that they had an incredible year of service. So, wherever you are in February, that's how they determine your allocation. And then, each April, they give you what those numbers are actually going to be in terms of allocations. Again, there are pathways to designations. The one for all teachers, we recognize that it is a challenge to create a local designation system that meets every subject. In fact, most districts, more than 95, 98%, have not done so. They gradually expand one group at a time because that student growth measure has to pass all of those data tests along with everything else. But the way that all teachers can be eligible is through the National Board Certification process, which is why we partnered with Region 6 to allow for that to happen and help our teachers and support them. Our Group A teachers are the ones that are in the live data collection in our designation system. And then, we're also piloting various growth measure assessments, pre-test, post-test, for Group B teachers, trying to expand that local designation group to more teachers at more grade levels and more settings. Just as a quick reminder, I promise not to read it. Promise. The Group A teachers are that top group up there, Pre-K, and those that are administering the MAP assessment in those various grades and subjects. And Group B teachers are everybody else who are looking at student learning objectives, possibly looking at pre-test, post-test. But then again, they also have the option of National Board Certification. And right here, you can kind of see the different areas for National Board Certification. We are excited. We had our first recipient of the National Board Certification that we helped shepherd through in our partnership with Region 6. She just passed the last test in December, and so it is a really wonderful accomplishment. It also stays with her for five years. Also, with National Board Certification, it does cost money upfront for the individual as you take each of those tests. But upon completion of the certification, the Texas Education Agency reimburses the district, and we are able to reimburse the teacher for those fees. And so, while it is money upfront, the recognized designation will be with this teacher for five years, and they'll be reimbursed for all of the assessments. So, really excited to see that cohort progress. We have a number of teachers still in it and hope to grow it even further than we've done so far. More and more will be coming on this. The Strategic Planning Committee will be meeting again to look at those Group B teacher groups and see if it's possible for us to consider them as part of the expansion. Just remembering that once you pass the data test, you have to pass it every year thereafter. And as you add another group in, you need to be careful that you meet all of those statistical measurements so that you keep the designations alive. Otherwise, if you do not pass, they will reject everything you submit for that particular year. So, something to be cautious of, but we're very hopeful that we'll be able to make some expansions this year in our application to the Texas Education Agency, which is due April 15th. So, that's a whole lot. We have information on our website. It is one of our recruiting tools, especially now that we have the payouts coming to the teachers. Those payouts will be in June. They will come as one check as a part of their paycheck, Mr. Bissell, as one payout moment in June. So, whatever the allocation is, minus TRS benefits and all those other things, that's what the teacher will receive in June of this year.
So, a question about that.
Ma'am.
It's good for five years.
Mm-hmm. This is your one.
Do they get the payment every year of the five years?
Yes, ma'am.
So, they don't have to do anything else?
No, ma'am.
It's, so that's...
Five years.
That could be a lot of money.
And it might incur, and based on what you're, where you're currently at, you may want to transfer to where there might be a higher need population and an equating higher allotment.
Well, I saw at one of our elementary schools, it was $28,000 and change.
Yes, ma'am.
So... For five years.
For five years in a row.
Has the legislature fully funded that?
We hope so, right, Mr. Bissell?
They say they have the funding for it, sir.
Well, this is incredible, and I'm pretty sure from everything I've heard, this was not simple. Y'all have a lot of work to do. I am kind of curious, and you may not know, but as far as where we are and my perspective, I'm wondering how many districts were able to pull this off, or do you have any idea?
Sure. This was the largest year ever. And again, each year, we have to, you have to resubmit each year your data to submit any new teachers. This particular cohort of TIA districts had, I think, over 200 districts apply for the data test and to pass it, and 77% of those passed the data test. On the TIA website for the state, they actually have an interactive map where you can see which ones have an application approved and which ones have a system approved. So, we will flip to having a system approved because it is one of those things we'd like to use to recruit teachers. Come earn your designation, we will grow you. We want to grow designated teachers, and we want you to stay here and serve the kids who need you the most. So, all of our kids. So, yes, sir. The more than ever this year was a big year for that, and it was their highest passing rate on the data test so far, 77%. It has been lower than that historically.
Well, congratulations, and I know that this is huge for so many of our teachers.
I think right now, I think there's, I think there's a lot of updating that we need to do on our part to clearly communicate to teachers what to expect. You know, we were really reserved with, this is, we're recommending you. We don't know what TEA will do. Please stand by. Like, we didn't want anyone to count their chickens before they were hatched. But now, it's time to provide clarity. And so, upcoming weeks, we'll be providing clarity to those designated teachers, what they can expect in terms of the remainder of the semester and the process.
They don't know yet, really.
They know, but they still have questions about what does that mean. We've even had teachers ask the same question that you asked, Dr. Harland. So, it's just for this year. I'm like, no, it's for five consecutive years. In fact, one of them I know very well. She's taught all three of my children, and she deserves to be designated, and she is designated. And I said, well, now you just can't retire, now can you? We need you. Our kids need you, and I want you to boost that retirement, so please stay with us.
I wouldn't tell them anything. I would just wait till June and just say, surprise.
Well, I want video.
Yeah, exactly.
We'd like to arrange some...
Here's what this looks like for you, right? It's very exciting. We hope, we desperately hope this will help with retention.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And we hope to bring them in here to the boardroom and spotlight them as well.
Absolutely. Line them up. How many, 130?
183. 183?
Thank you for all your work.
Absolutely. It's a great team.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right. So, now that moves us into items for discussion and our action for our consent agenda. So, we have quite a number of items on the consent agenda for this meeting. Is there anything that a member would like to pull off for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Dr. Harland, may I ask a question before we, and I don't know when to ask the question. Is there any way we could make the information that is available to the board members available to the public, like the budget? I have people ask me about the budget a lot. Is that something that, is there any reason we don't? I asked Ms. Carabine a little bit about it. Is there any reason that that's, we couldn't make that available for people to see?
Are you, which item are you talking about?
For instance, well, actually, all of it. But for instance, the budget. We spend a lot of money, and I know a lot of parents have asked me, well, what do you spend it on? Where does it go? So, is that something that we, are we prohibited? I don't know the question, the answer to the question is what I'm asking. Is it something that we could make available? Could we make the whole, everything that we see available to the public?
I think he's referencing item number three, approval of bills paid, financial statements, purchasing reports, et cetera. Mr. Bissell, do you want to explain anything about where it is available if the public wanted it? My understanding, it's on the website, but I'll let you...
It's available on the website once the meeting is over, but...
Maybe go to the mic.
Sorry, I'm...
No.
If this is the right time to ask.
I'm going to call the expert up.
Yeah, I mean, this information is available on the website. It's posted after the meeting, which is, which is the way we've always done it at Bryan ISD. But I don't know. We can check and see, or, you know, we can have discussion about, you know, would we? I know some districts do post. When they post their agenda, they post all of the attachments and all of that at the same time, so...
Because if a parent has a question about something that's on the budget, it's kind of hard afterwards. If it's something they wanted to come ask us about, I think we should invite that kind of input and dialogue if there's a question. We spend tens of millions of dollars a month, and they need, I think it's important for our parents to know where it's going, that we're handling it well. This is what's happening. So, I think it's kind of too late after the fact if it's posted after the meeting. If it's posted at the same time as the agenda's posted, then everyone's able to look at it, and I think for our transparency, it just helps us to be able to allow parents to ask any questions or know that what they're seeing, what we're seeing, is what I think would be very helpful. So, I just want to throw that out there for whatever it's worth.
We can certainly consider that moving forward.
Thank you. All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Does anyone have anything on the consent agenda you would like to discuss?
Does anyone have anything on the consent agenda you would like to discuss? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move approval of all the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Benford, approved by Dr. Davis, to approve the items on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion is approved. That gets us to items for discussion and action on our regular agenda. Consider approval of retention stipends and sign-on bonuses for the 2023-2024 school year.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. This item we bring forward today to consider some retention stipends, sign-on bonus for new teachers. This is similar to what we have going right now in the current year, the 2022-2023 school year, and it would be a duplicate of that. The reason to bring this forward now, with competition for teachers and staff at an all-time high and shortage of teachers and things, we do have one advantage, we have quite a bit of ESTR funds. Some districts, you know, it's based on, on need for each district, so some districts don't have quite, quite as much. But we do have the funding available through those ESTR funds yet for one more year, one more round of the stipends as we did this year. We would bring that forward at this time while we're still waiting to decide, you know, what our budget numbers are going to look like and all of that as the legislature works through their process. It's very early in the stage for them. You know, there's talk about money being added to the basic allotment and different things like that that would help us, but there's also a lot of discussion about other things that would not be so good for us, vouchers and those kind of things. So it's really too early to make a decision on those kind of things. At this point, we're monitoring that as we, as we go. But this would give us a chance to put this out, you know, give something incentive for the teachers and staff to maintain the continuity and the qualified staff that we have in place right now. The other additional thing, so this would be, and I think if you have an attachment there, it would be the, the two percent retention stipend that would be paid in September would be another one percent in December and one percent in May the following year, so 2024 there for May. And then for new teacher, the new teacher sign-on bonus would be a thousand dollars to try to recruit and help with that process as we go. The one additional thing that we've added for the 2324 year and through Ms. Carabine's meetings and snack with the superintendent and things that she's heard, teachers that have been here for a long period of time feel like they could be rewarded a little more for their longevity. So one of the things that we had funding available to add to that is it would be an incentive, a stipend added for teachers that have been here more than five years. So it started at two, $250, and it would graduate $250 for every five years. So teacher for five through nine years, of course, would be 250, graduating up to a maximum of $1,500 for teachers that have been here 30 years or more, and that would be paid out in February of '24. So just to, you know, some incentive to, to try to help move that along and keep our staff, retain our staff, and be able to offer something to new teachers or new people that are coming at an earlier time than waiting for the legislature to make their decisions until we know what our budget numbers are and what we might be able to do with raises. This would not be necessarily in lieu of raises, this would be in addition to, but we just don't know at this time what, what we would maybe be able to do for raises with our, with our budget numbers.
And the longevity stipend, is that what we're calling it? Bonus longevity?
It would be a...
Yeah, we didn't officially name it that, but that's essentially what it is.
The more wrinkles you have, the more money you're going to... Is that, that's a forever thing? I mean, we're putting that in now for...
Well, no, this is ESTR funding.
This is again, it's the one-time, it's the ESTR funds that will run out in twenty...
Yes, much like we've been doing with the others.
Right, right.
But the feedback that we get all the time is there's very little difference in salary, you know, for a first-year teacher to a 20-year teacher. So I hear that a lot, and they, they feel like their longevity is everything to us because that continuity is bar none. So by giving them a little bit extra based on the years of service, I think it'd be well-received. So starting at five years, you can see on the document that he has in before you, it shows how it would break down. So I don't know if you want to run through that for the public.
Yeah, so that, that would be, and again, that would be a one-time, but for five through nine years, longevity would be $250. Ten through fourteen years would be $500. Fifteen through nineteen years would be $750. Twenty through 24 years would be $1,000. Twenty-five through 29 would be $1,250, and then 30 or more would be the $1,500. One thing I would mention for, you mentioned Ms. Waller, maybe making that permanent. One of the things that's being talked about is increasing the basic allotment with our funding. And if they do that, under House Bill Three back in 2019, that's tied to, a certain percentage of that has to be used to increase salaries, and a certain percentage of the, of the increase has to be used on teachers, and it has to be differentiated. So the longer a teacher was here, the more they would get of that raise. So that's a possibility that is coming, that would be permanent if, if they pass something like that in the, in the legislature. Of course, they can always go back and change all of that, you know? But we're hopeful that they would just go ahead and raise the basic allotment. That's the, you know, the easiest way to raise, you know, all, all salaries across the board. And then if it was that basic allotment, that would also tie, it would bring in that, the differentiated pay for the longevity that would be, would be more on a permanent, long-term basis.
If, if we ever have it, I mean, this could just be, you know, pie in the sky for the future, but if we ever have it available, maybe we could start with the longest and then spend our money, even if, I mean, I hate to say it, but even if we're not giving something to the younger lasting or, you know, teachers that have been with us the shorter period of time, mostly, I mean, nothing against them, we're always going to try to find something, but, but we're sending a message to those teachers that have stuck it out in that, not mean stuck it out, but I mean, you know, stayed with us and through thick and thin, kind of like a marriage, you know? And so I would just love, and we all know the ones, I mean, we got personal thank yous from the ones that, you know, we've given money to the last few years.
Well, we've, we've always been pulled in both directions because obviously we've had our enormous pressure to be able to recruit and retain those younger teachers, and so it's always pulling from both directions. And I agree with you, I'd love to give our more experienced teachers more, but if we can't compete at the lower level, we're in big trouble. So that's, that's the other side of the coin. We need, we need enough money to do both.
Keep everybody happy.
Yeah.
Well, and it's...
We do so much to hire, you know, good teachers and keep them. I just never want our veteran teachers to ever...
It's just challenging to budget when we don't know what the legislature is going to do. That's the bottom line. I mean, it's very, I know people wish we could wave a magic wand, so do we, but we do not know the outcome of what will happen in the legislature right now, and that's just the hard fact of it. So yes, we want to do everything we can. I think what we're doing with this is budgeting off a known, which is ESTR funds, which we know are temporary. So yes, we wish we could do something for future, but we can only budget for what we have available.
And it's like what Leo was asking, you know, people don't realize that we're, our hands are tied with the money that we have for personnel.
Yeah.
And, you know, here we are, most of us experiencing some form of fashion and education, and, you know, I loved it, but I feel sorry for, for my teachers that have, have, you know, year after year said, is just, is there anything? You know, you just want to give them the shirt off your back. But we're so stifled because the money doesn't come from our pockets.
Yes, it's frustrating. We are thankful, though, for the amount of ESTR that we received in our district is far superior than many other districts. And Kevin and his department and all of us, actually, with, with your approval, believe that we should invest as much as possible for our human resources. So that's why we've set aside this amount to at least do these recruitment stipends and retention stipends. Some other districts chose to use it for instructional resources and materials, et cetera. We believed the importance of investing in our staff was paramount, so we've had this good fortune to do this. But we will have the infamous fiscal cliff, if you will, because this will end. So we, we really hope that our legislators are going to make good decisions in the best interest of our school districts and that they will dedicate a revenue stream or funding source for compensation. We really are hopeful for that will happen.
And because I'm sure this conversation is going to hit the media, of course, explain what ESTR money was and is, please.
ESTR money was a grant, basically came down from the federal government to get us through COVID, was really the, you know, they realized that there was a, you know, it put a real strain on education as a whole and, and the entire system. And, you know, with schools being out, you know, it created a learning gap for students that were not able to attend or they, they didn't do as well with remote. You know, we were, we were lucky and we were able to switch pretty rapidly to remote learning, and we, we kept going, but it created, you know, what they call the learning gap. And so these funds were, were basically designated to, one, you know, provide for, you know, the things that we needed to survive COVID, the PPE and different things like that, wipes and, and all of that kind of stuff. And then the other part was to put in place, you know, people like social workers, more counselors, different things like that. And then, you know, additional teachers, we used quite a bit of it on tutors, you know, different resources to be able to try to, you know, soup up that learning curve and, and close that gap, so to speak, is what they're doing. So the reason, you know, using it for, for this purpose to maintain our continuity and our, and our quality staff, I mean, we feel that's, that's very beneficial to that process. So that's, that's where we, where we came from that.
Any other questions? Not, we can entertain a motion.
I move approval of the retention stipends and sign-on bonuses for the 2023-24 school year as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Davis and seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. All right, motion approved. Thank you, Mr. Beesaw.
Thank you.
Next is to authorize the superintendent to negotiate and enter into a contract regarding the facility assessment at Bryan High School, Merrill Green Stadium, the CTE complex facility, and the CTE facilities at Rutter High, SFA Middle School, and Davila Middle School.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So this is a result of as we worked through the 2020 bond and, you know, started actually getting into those projects, working through some of them. It, it came to light that there were some areas that, that we really needed a little bit more information on before that we felt like we were ready to move forward with projects in that area. And part of it was Bryan High School has a lot of things, it's spread out, it, it is kind of a different setup and, and the facility assessment that we had noticed, it, it put some areas on the, on the map, but as we started to look into those, it, it seemed that those were not really going to fix the real issues. And some of them would just create more issues, ADA issues and things like that that would come up. Merrill Green Stadium was another one, and then basically all of our CTE facilities. You know, CTE's been, been growing, and it needs a more specialized look at it. So we went back to the process of, of looking to, to do another facility assessment on just those areas, so we'll be specializing and only looking at those areas in this process. This particular one, we, we put out a request for qualifications for architects, and we received seven responses to that. A group went through those and based on the, you know, professional qualifications, their, their financing availability, the different things that, that those groups have done. We then went through and ranked them, one through seven. Then there was a natural gap at about number one through three, so we went ahead and called those back for interviews. I would mention that since these things really are attained, are pertaining to Bryan High, Merrill Green Stadium, and CTEC, the committee was made up, we had Ms. Laura King, who's a CTEC person, Derek Rush, who's the athletic person, and then Lane Boobin was a principal at Bryan High, of course, and then myself and Paul Buckner, the construction person, and then Melissa Martin, the procurement person. And that's the group that went through and evaluated these with an eye towards those things that we would need to, to really work on and focus on for this particular project. And so when we got through that, got through the, the initial process, went through the interviews for that, what we would recommend tonight would be authorizing Ms. Carabine to discuss with PBK to make an offer to them, try to work a deal for them to be able to do this, this facility assessment.
And Mr. Beesaw, if I may add, specific to the CTE portion of this, this was actually discussed and decided on the CTE Advisory Council. It's a comprehensive group of people, community members, staff members, business, industry partners, Texas A&amp;M University in Bland, there's quite a few, even Region Six representatives. As we contemplate the future of CTE and any possibility of expansion, we felt it was very important to know what's happening with our current facilities before we could even entertain any kind of expansion. So that's a big part of the reason we wanted to have the most current information possible for CTE.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me ask a question, please. It's forward, and I think we asked the same question, Mr. Buckner. So we narrowed it down to three architects, and then we choose, I guess you said you had a list of seven, and there was a gap between three and four, so...
Right. We interviewed three, actually.
Okay.
The top three were called back for interviews.
So we only get bids from one, then? We, we don't, again, this is, I think, and you may, I apologize for having to explain it again to me, but how do we get competitive bidding with three of them if we're picking one to go with?
Yeah, so in this case, then, then we would, we would choose that one, we would try to negotiate the, the contract with them, a certain percentage. And we know, you know, what, what a good percentage, not good percentage, or, you know, what, what the standard rate is out there for that. And so if we can get with that company and we can get what is an acceptable rate for us, we will choose them. If not, if we can't work that out with them, then we would cut off negotiations with that one, and then we could go to the number two on the list.
And this is just for the architecture, of course, not for the actual building?
Right.
Separate, totally separate.
Right, this would not be for doing any of the, any of the work.
This is just a facilities assessment.
Just would be just a facility assessment, correct.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying that.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
I move to authorize the superintendent to negotiate and enter into a contract for architectural and engineering services with PBK Architects for the Bryan High School, Merrill Green Stadium, the CTE complex facility, and the CTE facilities at Rutter High, SFA Middle School, and Davila Middle School facility assessment as presented.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved by Ms. Waller and seconded by Dr. Davis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say no. All right, motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Beesaw. Next, we will move to local governance, discussion of board policy updates.
Good evening. Board policy updates for you this evening are lighter than the previous ones, but we do have a few to go over, both legal and local. And so just as a reminder what our process looks like, district staff works with subcommittees. We look at the legal updates, and, and the legal updates this evening come from changes to the administrative code. The last legislative session passed a number of bills. The commissioner has now updated some areas of administrative code, so has a state, and as reflection, our policy must now mirror the legal side of it. So what we do is we look and see what were those changes, and does...
And does our state organization, does the district recommend any changes to practice in terms of what the local policy looks like in implementation? And so that process transpires for all of the policies that are on the update for you this evening. And again, this will be a high-level overview, will not be every policy. I know that we do not have time to go through every single policy in a presentation, but a couple that perhaps we should look at. The first one there, under basic district functions and under policy A, is accountability, interventions, and sanctions. And they just made some minor changes to revise requirements for local improvement plans. Those are based on state accountability performance. As a reminder, we're under a current accountability system where we received an 86 for this particular school year. That accountability system is being completely revised for the coming school year, and we are anxiously awaiting to see all of the details, along with the changes to the assessment itself. But at any rate, that has been updated here just to provide clarity, and that's under the legal policy. No policy updates are needed for local in response to this particular item. When we get over to policy B, local governance, there are a number here for us to discuss. For the first one there, BBB deals with board member elections, and we do fall a little outside of, every district does, of what Tasby recommends based on when prior elections have transpired. And so you'll notice some additional language has been placed there and updated years. They ask us to update the years for three years out. So for example, District Five, Mr. Stasny, we have 2025 for your next election, then 2028 and 2031. It does not match with Mrs. Waller because of when the last elections were held, and so yours is 2024, 2027, and then 2030. And then subsequently, you can see all of the other positions that are located in policy update BBB. So that is a local update that is recommended to just have clarity for all of our stakeholders when those elections will transpire. Also noted under board policy.
Hang on one second, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I don't have a policy up in front of me.
This is, I think there's a document.
Okay. So, I mean, Mr. Stasny's election date didn't change. Did I miss who you were comparing that to?
It's not in sync with District Four, with, based on the three-year rotation. Mrs. Lee worked with the last elections, and so she's updated it as a result of that.
Because we appointed Mr. Stasny and then he had to turn around and immediately run again because that's when that position was.
That was to finish one year to one full year, and then the last election was for a full term.
Right. But that didn't, I mean, because we tried to put it off-cycle and we could, we're told that we couldn't put it off-cycle.
Okay.
Because it would, you know, we couldn't change it.
It had to follow that same pattern.
And that's why there was, there's only a six-month period in there. So I don't think it should have changed from what it was originally.
I think it, all it did was add, I think, was add the extra years.
The next term, so there.
So I'm looking at BBB in the thing, and you can see the track changes, and it just added years to those places, I think.
I think what it said originally, at least I was bringing this to Ms. Carabine's attention, I think it might have had the wrong year and what we were given initially to look at, because it says something about 24. But again, this is for place five, which was Doug's, Doug's district, of course. And so when he resigned, there was actually a full year plus a piece of one. And then, so I served by appointment the piece of a year, and then I had to run for one year to finish out his three-year term. So we're back on track for District Five now that it would end in 2025. That's my understanding.
And that's what it says in here.
And what we'll do, we'll double-check all of this. It's for discussion only this evening, so we'll verify it with a little bit of legal support and just make sure that we're on the right page with those election years. Be happy to do that.
Perfect, thank you.
Because if I'm only getting two years, I wouldn't have run.
Mr. Stasny.
This is too much work for two years. It's a lot of work.
Well, no, because we had tried to, we originally had tried, our goal and motivation was to move that, change that seats election time period to move it to coincide so there would only be a, you would only have to run once within there.
Right.
And we were, and we could not do that because of, at least that was the advice of council at the time. So that's what required kind of a back-to-back, was that we could not adjust it, which I didn't really totally get a great clarifying answer as to why we could not change local policy on that.
Well, we will take a look at it with council again and just make sure that we are on the right page with it, absolutely. You probably know this one as well, board policy update BBD requires every board of trustee member to have a training and a course on school safety every two years. So again, more training requirements. I know you spend a lot of time in training as board members. This one is new and added, and probably many of you have already completed this training since it's online. There's an update here to BEDlocal. BEDlocal pertains to public participation in board meetings, and in particular, the citizens' comment section of board meetings. And this was based on a recommendation from a board committee that we make it more available to the public and make it easier for people to sign up for commenting to the board. Obviously, we know you can come to the building, you can fill out the little slip of paper and give it to Mrs. Lee upon arrival, ten minutes prior to the board meeting. This update to BEDlocal would allow an individual to fill out an online form up to 24 hours prior to a board meeting and submit it via email electronically to Mrs. Lee. They still need to be present at the board meeting and check in. We want to make sure that when we call the individuals' names, that we know that they're here and that it's a legitimate citizen's comment that's going to be addressed that evening. So just make sure that all of it's, when it gets electronic, sometimes we need to make sure we get a chance to also see the individual here and check them in. But this update provides that opportunity, and it also updates the draft form there for public speakers to come and know what that recommend, what those guidelines are when they address the board of trustees, what we're able to do as a citizen coming to make a comment, and likewise, what the board is able to do in response to said comments. And so the recommendation was to move all of that into the form itself and then just provide a little bit of updated language to our policy that is online. As we move on to Section C of board policy, this area deals with business and support services, and so if I talk out of turn, Mr. Beesaw will come and support me, I'm sure of it. Requires the district to give public notice of federal grant applications. I think we've seen a number of things coming forward already where the boards receive informational items on various grant opportunities coming to the district. And it authorizes superintendent to approve the plan for that grant award. CKB Legal Safety Program just gives revisions to administrative codes with mandatory drills and optional active threat exercises are also incorporated there, just again, giving us more clarity on what that looks like. CKC deals with adding a local policy for emergency management in relation to schools that are with 1,000 yards of a railroad track. And I believe our staff has already taken a look at that, Mr. Hemel and Mr. Clary. And we have one campus that would need that as a part of their operations plan, it's Davila Middle School. And so that's actually already in progress and in motion. So policy just reflects that we need to have that in motion and have it in place for them. And you'll see one more there also, CMD Legal. This is pertaining to the Childhood Internet Protection Act, and that each district will certify, once the commissioner tells us how we're allowed to certify, that we follow all of the rules of the Childhood Internet Protection Act. Board Policy D, the section there on D Personnel, did not have any updates this time, so there are no updates for that particular section. And then we go into E, Instruction, and these are pretty minor as well, just updated language on administrative codes relating to positive character traits and personal skills that we are required to do those things. Thankfully, we have a very strong program with the Essential Eight, and then also with the changemaker's curriculum that our Counseling Services Department utilizes, which was also purchased with ESSR funds, as Mr. Beesaw mentioned earlier. But a wonderful resource to make sure that that is alive and thriving in our classrooms and in our schools. And then EHAB addresses the phonics curriculum, and we are very, very thankful for the grant that the district received from TEA. Last year, we were one of few who received a multimillion-dollar grant for phonics curriculum in dyslexia services. And that Reading Horizons Training has been going beautifully with our kinder through third-grade teachers, and they're very appreciative and appreciate the materials more so. So that has gone very well.
You know, we probably ought to put some more, or put that out there because there's a lot of former teachers and parents that would love to know that we're teaching phonics again and more. I mean, I think, you know, we all know how good it is.
We've got nothing but good feedback from all of the teachers that are utilizing it this year. I mean, it is a tremendous resource and the training has been impeccable.
Yeah.
Then finally, board policy area F has some minor updates to clarifications for when restraints, when it's necessary, may be utilized, under what circumstances, and then various complaint processes for special education. There are others in there, of course, there are, again, more that we can go over, but these are the ones that we tended to look a little more heavily at to make sure we were on the right page and everything is up to date. So the, again, this evening is just for discussion, and we'll bring it back to the board for consideration at our next board meeting. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
I would just like to say that when I hear, when I was running, I kept hearing, y'all have so many, and I've said this before, you have so many administrators, you know, and y'all do a lot of work. I haven't seen Dr. Merrill do much. Oh, here he comes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But everybody else seems to work really, really hard, so I just want to say y'all do a lot. And like Ms. Waller was saying, it's from the outside looking in, it's easy to say, they've got a lot of people up there. But when we see what you guys actually have to do and go through, it's much appreciated and it's a big job. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Barra. We look forward to seeing this at our next meeting, and unless we hear more questions, we'll just put that on a consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
For our March workshop. Thank you. All right, we will, the board will now convene in closed session to discuss the following items as allowed by Texas Government Code, Chapter 551.074. No voting will take place in the closed meeting. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of discussion in closed session will take place after the board reconvenes in the open meeting. It is now 7:19.
Ms. Carabine, any updates on? Let's care about any updates on.
The board reconvened in open session at 8:38 PM. No action was taken in closed session. We will now adjourn.[1794.08][1794.08](applause)
I was talking about you.